I'd like to call the June 28, 2016, school committee meeting to order. This meeting is being recorded by the PBD School Committee Recording Secretary, Ms. Marge Macarelli. The matters listed below are those reasonably anticipated by the chair which may be discussed at the meeting. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by law. First, I'd like to have a moment of silence. If you'd all please rise. And now for the pledge of allegiance. I'll now entertain a motion for the approval of minutes.
Mr. Chairman, I move to approve minutes of June 14, 2016.
You heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico. No further discussion, roll call, vote.
Yes.
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 Next item on the agenda is approval of bills.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 3092 dated June 28, 2016 in the amount of
Second.
Subject to audit.
Second.
You've heard the motion by Ms. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 3093 dated June 28, 2016 in the amount of $142,493.34, subject to audit.
Second.
You heard the motion by Ms. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote please.
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 3094 dated June 28, 2016 in the amount of $58,760.0, subject to audit.
Second.
You heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Hockman. Roll call, vote.
Yes.
Ms. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
I would now like to turn the floor over to Dr. Levine for the presentation by Ms. Sudi Smaller.
Thank you very much. We unfortunately don't have a screen set up, but Sudi has told me that this is a perfect learning opportunity for all of us. She is going to present you with an opportunity for you to add the PBD mobile app to your phone tonight. So, I'll turn this over to Sudi and thank her for coming.
Thank you very much. I'm Sudi Smaller. I work at the Higgins, and I can't tell you how excited we all are to be moving on to the New Higgins and to the one-to-one Chromebook initiative. And what I want to talk to you about tonight, I think, is just another step in that evolution to our digital presence. I have a page on the website, the address is on the sheet that I gave you, that includes tutorials on how to download and manipulate the app. But what I want to do is walk you through, if you have a phone, installing the app so you can give us some questions. And while you're doing that, because the instructions are right here on the sheet, if you have an iPhone, you're going to go to the App Store and download PBD Public Schools. And if you have an Android, you'll go to the Play Store, search for PBD Public Schools, and download the app. If something happens when you download the app where you get a message that says something like "Sophos low reputation," that has to do with the filter you have on your phone. And the "low reputation" means not a lot of people have downloaded our app yet, so it doesn't have a high rating. Once we have more and more people downloading the app, that "low reputation" message won't appear, but it doesn't appear for everyone anyway. So, what I'll do now is tell you while you're doing that a little bit about the history of our website and the app. And it was under the leadership of Dr. Levine, the first time he served as interim superintendent, that we obtained SchoolWires to be our website. And the purpose that we did that in 2011 was to create a brand for the district on our website. Prior to that, every school had a different look. There was nothing that thematically or visually made us look like a cohesive district. So that was the point of the purchase of SchoolWires. SchoolWires is one of the top school website providers in the world, in the nation. They are recently, in the last year or so, been bought by Blackboard, another huge reputable educational digital organization. Once they were bought by Blackboard, they started working on a mobile app. What we bought in 2011 was a custom template. We went there and designed our template to look a certain way, and now it stays that way until we pay them again to design it elsewise. But what they've done to try to bring us all into the new digital realm, even though that's only five years ago that we bought the website, is they've created a shell for the website that they are calling "The App." And you'll notice that on the app, you have a collection of tools and portals about what's happening at our schools. You can find out news through the front page. I hope you all have it in front of you so that you can see what I'm talking about. You can, those news stories that are flashing are news that is fed from the superintendent and the assistant superintendent's Twitter feed. We also feed Channel 8 on PAT through our website. You also have there two screens. If you slide over to the left, you'll see a screen that has, let me just do that on my computer here even though you can't see it, or on my phone actually. And what I wanted to say about why, even though we don't have the screen and I can't use the best visual learning tools that are available to us to get my message across, that's the exact reason we want to have an app, because kids are at home without the Internet, kids are at home without the computer. They probably have, research shows, someone in the family with a phone. So this is going to increase our homeschool communication vastly. And you'll see some of the components, including directory. If you click on the directory, you can search for any PBD Public Schools employee at any school. You can, for instance, I'm going to go to the Brown School. If you scroll down on that information sheet, you'll see teachers. And if you click on teachers, the roster of all the teachers in their building appears. And if you click on an individual teacher, you get their email address. We can flush out more information as well. You also have on that second page, "Make a Payment," which right now goes to the city's existing payment procedure. I think that's going to change with the new school coming online. The sports page goes directly to an app that has been designed for mobile purposes that includes all our sports information. The Destiny Library app goes to our school-wide library collection online that you can search. It is available in app form, but I have not yet been able to negotiate with Blackboard and SchoolWires to connect with that app. They are promoting certain apps, obviously. The tip line is new. If you click on that, you can access the superintendent with an issue that you would like to report. There's a calendar app, which, when we bought SchoolWires, we didn't really implement the full calendar opportunity that we had because at the same time we adopted Google Calendar. And the two calendars, SchoolWires and Google, at that time could not mesh. Now they can. So our calendar is going to get more vibrant. Notifications, if you click on notifications, you can go to a specific school, and any time a school puts up a notification and you're following that school, you will get notice of it. Right now, there are no messages in the notifications. If you go back to the first screen, you'll see "About Us." And this is the page where you learn about the district. Each one of these boxes leads you to, say, if you click on Administration, a picture of the superintendent, assistant superintendent, and when you click on that, say superintendent, it takes you to the superintendent's page. But it's taking you to the website. The website drives this app. Until we redesign with SchoolWires at an additional cost or in renegotiation of our contract, a new design for our website, the best we can do to get the look and feel of this app is to try to make it as optimal as possible. So pages that you really have to enhance with your finger on the phone, we can try to make them as best as possible using the tool that we have. And we haven't yet done that because the app is so new. We are one of the first districts to be working with both SchoolWires and Blackboard to implement this new tool. They're offering us lots of free things to consider. We're also kind of holding back to see what comes with the new digital stuff for the Higgins Middle School, including like our menu might be driven by a point-of-sale system. I'm not really sure what we're purchasing there. But at least our menu as it exists is up there, and we will try to improve it. And if, at some point, the school committee would like us to move forward to try to make this website more current, even though it's only five years old, you know, that's in your hands. We're willing to do that. But I think the app really says a lot and really gives us a chance to announce the opening of the Higgins Middle School in the format that people are going to be accessing it the most, and to try to make it work really well for the Higgins Middle School. So I'm sorry I didn't give you my complete presentation. I hope you'll take your time to go to the online tutorials because that was a new learning process for me too, to learn how to connect my phone top to my computer so I could record a tutorial to tell you how to use it. We're all learning how to use this app, all of us, and all the things it can do for us. And there are many things that I'm not prepared to tell you about, but that are available to us through this app. I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have. I hope it worked.
Sudi, thank you so much. This is really exciting for me, just to be able to look at the sports schedules and know who's playing when and all the information that's tucked into this website. I just think it's a great positive change for our school district, and I know that many, many people will use this now. Tremendous job, Sudi, for what you've done.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Sudi, I just want to thank you. This was really easy to do, and anybody that knows me knows that when I say that, this was really easy to do. I did have one question. I know parents will be interested in the grade portal. Will they be able to access that from their cellphone? The grade.
The grade portal. The grade portal is MMS, is a different system. We can, through this program, create a new system that would be driven by the app, or we can publish what the MMS app publishes. Just like now, when you go to our website and you want to sign in to see your kid's grades, you would go to that page or that box on the app, and it would take you to that page where you have to sign in. There may be more efficient ways to do it using what the app offers itself, but I'm not aware of, in fact, they did not have a great frame of reference with MMS to call on. So that's one of those things with Blackboard and SchoolWires, we're all kind of trying to find our ways, the best way to go.
And one other question. These directions are on the website for people at home to go to?
They are, and the website is listed on that page. And once I presented it to you, I figured we'd put it further up on the front of the webpage with the directions, and we will make an icon on the app with the directions on how to use the app. So we'll be getting it out as much as possible all summer.
This was great. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn.
As Dr. Levine had pointed out, one thing that I know that, me as a parent and on the school board, you have kids in a bunch of different schools having different things. This is one way to make sure that you're able to access and see all the events district-wide. So this is a great step forward, and I really appreciate the time and the energy spent on this.
Any further questions from the board? Being none, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Continued Business, number one being the Higgins Project. Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just to report on our most recent meeting, we had a tour of the building, and the furniture has been delivered and is in all of the classrooms. The facility is just amazing to see it going up. The auditorium is absolutely beautiful. And at the close of our meeting, we had a brief, I'm sorry, at the close of the tour, we had a brief meeting and scheduled our monthly meetings. The next meeting in July, and I'm sorry, I don't have the calendar in front of me. Wait a minute. It's the 23rd, thanks. I was going to look it up on the app. That's okay. That next meeting is going to take place in the library of the New Higgins. So we are going to have, you know, start working in that building. Presently, there is a temporary occupancy permit which is allowing Mr. Busey and his administrative staff to, actually, their offices were being moved this afternoon, and they will now be able to work out of that building through the next few weeks so that they can set up their offices and all the record-keeping that needs to be going on during the summer. Teachers will be given a chance later on in the summer to come in and set up their classrooms. But all of the classrooms, of course, they have all been packed up, and those boxes are being moved over to the school, over to the new school over the next several weeks. Demolition of the new building will take place in four different phases. It will begin with the boiler room and the chimney, which is only about a foot and a half from the new building. Once the boiler room and chimney are down, the two sites will really be separated again, and the work on the exterior roadway can be completed. The work on the old Higgins will then begin, and they'll proceed from the end closest to the new building, which is traditionally the vocational end, and they will move through the building doing abatement and then demolition. The parking area in front of the building is going to be utilized as a staging area. So actually today, the traffic pattern changed yesterday, and it will continue to change. Fences will be going up to keep people off of that site once it is empty and under the demolition orders. So there are new changes going on every day, but the opening of the building is coming before anyone can really imagine it. There was a ceremony last week where a symbolic key was presented to Mr. Buckley and to the mayor, and that was a very nice ceremony. Students were attending that, and it was fun to talk to the students and find out what they thought of the new building. They were allowed to see a bit of it, and we actually took a group of students downstairs with Mr. Jack McCarthy, the head of MSBA, who was at the ceremony. We took Jamie Wilson and some of her classmates down to see the new culinary room, and it was fun to talk with her about, you know, the possibilities of not only learning in that classroom, but hopefully she'll be filming some of her shows from that classroom. So there is a lot going on continuously onsite and with all of the programming that's going on, and people are getting even more excited about it. And then, again, last night, as you all know, there was a walk-through where people could say goodbye to the old Higgins, and that went well. I think there were close to 1,000 people, we estimated, 1,000 came through in three hours. And we also hosted, at the end of that tour, we hosted a neighborhood meeting, and it was designed so that the neighbors could come in and hear about the progress of the project, but also to understand that the changes with the construction, what's going to go on in the summer. They were given the timeline, and they were able to speak about a lot of the different issues that they have going on. There is abatement going on right now with some of the new plantings that disturbed some of the neighborhood mice and rats, and people have been concerned about that. And we had Sharon Cameron from the Board of Health there to speak with folks and taking a very proactive approach to that. The demolition, people were concerned about how that's going to impact the neighborhood, noise, dust, disturbances, any of that. And those questions were all answered, and then as we go forward, we know there'll be more questions coming up, and we have our liaisons still in place to take care of the neighborhood concerns. There will be changes with the traffic pattern, and there were concerns expressed last night about that, so they're going to continue to work on that. But it is because people may not realize that they will still be bringing their student to an active construction site, and we have to be mindful of that and be able to make sure that the traffic, as much as possible, avoids the work site. Because as soon as the school, the old school is demolished, work will then begin on that specific site to put in new athletic fields. So it's, in a way, it's just a bit of a reverse of what we went through to construct the new building. Now we're going to deconstruct the old building and then replicate athletic fields. So there's a lot of infrastructure work that has to go on, and that is why, in order to keep the site intact, there will be changes in the traffic patterns. But it will only be for a year, and then we will go into our permanent. So again, the next meeting is going to be held at the New Higgins.
Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. I just have a couple of questions, actually. On the 21st, the Higgins Building Meeting, that'll be at 4 o'clock?
Yes, the regular time.
Do you also know if there are, when there will be an open house for the public for the New Higgins? Has that date been established yet?
No, we have not established that date because we actually, there are so many events going on, the primary purpose is, the primary goal is to get the students into the building and get schools started. We're going to plan the dedication of the building, the ribbon cutting and all of that fun activity for a Saturday. And we really haven't confirmed those dates yet, only because going forward, we need to make sure that we have it on days that are really conducive to having people come in and visit. We need to look at that very beginning of the school year and make sure, with all the activities that come up, that's why it's really nice, we'll have that master calendar now, that we'll be able to schedule around that and make sure that we pick a night when most people can come, and a day, as we said, on a Saturday, we really want to be able to have all the students there and all the people who want to be there come, because it's a big accomplishment for our city. But as we get those dates, I think there's going to be, not just a memo, I mean, there's going to be an invitation with all these different dates for different people to come through too. There will be a special time for the neighbors. There will be a special time for the general public. There are going to be some smaller tours for the elected officials, the school committee, the city council, and the building committee to go through and really see the building. And so there's a lot of activity planned, but we can't do anything concrete at the moment until we clarify the opening of school.
Thank you. No further questions. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda being voting in schools, and I'll turn the podium over to Mr. Hockman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First, through you, I'd like to thank Dr. Levine for writing to our city clerk, Tim Spanos, and inviting him to come to our meeting tonight. And then I'd also like to thank Mr. Spanos for his response, which is in our packets, in which he indicates he's not able to be here tonight because he has a previously scheduled matter. But he does go through some length to talk about, I think, some of the questions that were raised during the course of our meeting, and also closes with a recommendation for us. So at this time, and I'd like to make a motion to adopt that recommendation, which is that the Board of Registarians would reiterate that they are in favor of utilizing any and all schools for polling locations wherever possible.
Second. You heard the motion by Mr. Hockman, seconded by Mr. Amico. On the motion, Mrs. Carpenter.
Thank you. Based on the letter from Mr. Spanos, it seems that he would like to put this off and have discussion about it. He seems to have a lot of questions, so I'm not really sure what the motion would be doing.
Mr. Hockman.
We don't, the motion would simply be to give the Board of Registarians and the City Council the opportunity to exercise the use of school buildings should they deem it advisable or necessary for polling locations. If at some point they do choose to do that, it's my understanding from this letter that Mr. Spanos has, or has committed to, as he has in the past, to work with us in order to provide us an opportunity to express some concerns that we may have in the future as we have in the past. So the motion would be to give the City Council and the Board of Registarians the opportunity to use school buildings as polling locations should they choose.
I'd just like to interject something at this particular moment. If you look at number three in his response, he doesn't want to separate September and November voting places. So the reason why this was before us so urgently was because it was going to be under a time restraint to try to get this approved so that it could move to the City Council so that they could then have a polling place in November. Where Mr. Spanos wasn't able to come before us tonight, and where he's not looking for November, I would be inclined to move this following a meeting with Mr. Spanos. That, again, this is just my opinion and my interpretation, at least of his letter to us. But on that, Mr. Amico.
Through to Chair of the Committee. And he does, and Mr. Spanos does outline that in the letter. Any of the concerns that were raised at our last meeting, you know, having one voting place in September and a separate one in November, you know, he outlines that. Again, what Mr. Hockman is saying here is we're just basically giving them the ability to utilize the schools. And I think any of the concerns that we had at the last meeting, and he also goes, Mr. Spanos also goes into, he wants to speak to Principal Busey, he wants to speak to the Secretary of State. So I just think we're giving them the ability and the option to do so, to utilize the schools. And all the concerns that were raised at the last meeting, safety concerns or whatnot, those will be handled by the election Election Commission and Mr. Spanos. Thank you.
My, my feeling is, some of the polling locations, some of the polling locations we currently have are directly near students, in some cases literally walking past them. It would just be a good opportunity, in my opinion, just to have a discussion with Mr. Spanos. Because I don't know if I would be completely comfortable with saying every polling location is at your disposal. Choose any school that you want. I would rather have...
Point of information. We presently don't have school on election day. No polling location is anywhere near kids. And it's in the collective bargaining agreement that we're going to have election day off from school. So in order for us to get kids near polling locations, if polling locations are in schools, we have to go through a whole litany of hurdles.
And I understand your point. But how many special elections and how many primaries do we have? Those kind of happen frequently. I'm not, if it's the will of the committee, I'm not opposed to move this forward as it stated. And there's already a motion on the floor. I was just stating, one of the reasons why we held this off was to meet with Tim directly. If the committee wants to move forward with this, I don't have a problem with that. I was just saying where there's no urgency right now, because we don't have to have this finished by November. Because that was, that was the impetus of moving this forward so quickly, in my opinion. Or at least having a vote right now was to have this up and ready for the City Council to have voting in November. Where that isn't really driving us at the moment, to me, meeting with Tim and kind of getting his sense of everything that he wants, I think just will make us better educated. But that's, like I said, there's a motion on the floor, and it'll be the will of the committee what moves forward. Ms. Cauverna.
Thank you. There are many points in Mr. Spanos' letter that each one of us can point out. One of them was, in closing, with giving all the factors, we feel it would be wise to wait and make sure everything is in order prior to moving forward. Which I also think it would be wise to wait. There are many unanswered questions in regards to holding elections in our schools. It isn't an automatic that we are not in session. We are only not in session on the November general election, as you had mentioned, Mr. Rozignol. In the last couple of years, we've had more special elections and primaries than we've ever had before. Five or six of them in one year, which are not predicted. So school is in session. And in addition to that, there were questions that arose that Ms. Dunn pointed out about the gym floor. I would like to formally request that Mr. Healy come before us to discuss that as well. We also have questions in regards to, during negotiations, we did discuss that we would be holding professional development inside the Higgins building, which Ms. Murtagh was going to get back to us about how we would schedule that. So I think it would be wise to wait and get all of the information. I would like to continue to ask that we, as Mr. Spanos has said, that we meet after the November 8th election jointly with the City Council and Mr. Spanos, and go over all of these things. This is a longstanding issue. This is something that has been voted on before and was assumed to have been moving out of our schools. That has not happened. We were going to have a discussion with the City Council, and I would think that we should just wait and have a joint meeting with City Council and the Board of Electioneers and get it all out there together.
Could I please hear what the motion specifically was for?
Commission the opportunity to use the school buildings if they so choose. Give the City Council and Election Commission the opportunity to use school buildings if they so choose.
In that, thank you, and that would be specifically for elections. Because the way that that's worded, without the word for elections, one of the biggest problems is the City Council had issue with the fact that the school committee actually controls the buildings. And that has been a power struggle at the basis of most of the discussions going on on the City Council side. And I think that one thing that you want to do is to be very specific. If this is about elections, the City Council doesn't make the decision on where elections take place. The Board of Registars makes the actual decision. And then the City Council is allowed to either approve or disapprove of that. The City Council does not determine where the election will take place. They do not determine which buildings it will take place in. And that, again, is one of the issues in the meeting that was driving, the preliminary meeting between the liaison subcommittees. And it's, it's a point that needs to be made very clear, in my opinion.
Ms. Dunn, yes, it's for elections. The motion would be for elections. And if Ms. Macarelli could change the motion to read Board of Registars, it's not the Election Commission, it's the Board of Registars here in PBD. And it's for elections only.
Thank you. Because I really do want it to be very clear.
You all sent us done. Mr. Amico?
Through the chair of the committee. In his letter, Mr. Spanos speaks how the Higgins School just may not be available in September and possibly even November. And what we should remember is the reason why it was moved from the Higgins to the Calvary, and I'm just talking about Ward 4, is because of the construction. And if the construction process didn't happen, then it would be at the Higgins. So in saying, in saying that, he is, he is looking out for safety and not looking to do anything, you know, until after the election. So I think we can just go to, you know, Phase 1, or back again to where the election was at the Higgins. And I just don't see why we can't have it at the Higgins after the November 8th election.
Ms. Dunn, and then Ms. Cauverna.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I will tell you that it is a very good idea to have Mr. Healy come in and explain to the Board his concerns about the election taking place in the Higgins gym, not with any regard to next year, the year after, the year after. He has some very valid points that he would like to bring forward about the actual location and usage of specific areas at the Higgins. So it would be good to get that information. The location of the building is one thing, but using the gym is a very big concern. And Mr. Healy had some very interesting information about that, that he discussed with me about that. Because I asked him specifically, I asked him about the price for the, for the rubber floor, about, you know, using the gym. And there are a lot of, lot of issues. So it's, it's a good idea. Mrs. Cauverna has requested that he come and speak with us because he would be the best one to explain it to everybody.
Ms. Cauverna.
Thank you. I would just like to point out to Mr. Amico that the original reason about moving the Higgins true originally was construction. It was placed up high on the priority list of buildings to remove voting from because of the construction. Along with moving the voting location from the Higgins because of construction was also a letter that said, "All voting locations will be removed from all of our public schools within the next year." What happened was, the Higgins was moved up to the top priority because of construction. When that letter went to the City Council, which only had one no vote, the entire board except for Mrs. Dunn had voted to move forward with removing polling locations inside our public schools. This is where the issue came about that the City Council was possibly confused about whether or not they had the ability to approve using our buildings for voting. And then this turned into requesting a meeting with them. So originally, all of them were supposed to be removed at that time, and the Higgins was just moved up to a higher priority.
Mr. Amico?
I just wanted, through the chair of the committee, I just wanted to go back to the, the new gym and the possibility of having a tarp down that we spoke about. The other possibility is, in many schools across the state, they have voting in, in the cafeteria. So I don't know why we necessarily have to just pinpoint the gym as the place. And if we're not waiting till possibly a year or two years down the road for a voting place at the Higgins, by then we would already have had a graduation at the Higgins, and we probably should have. And it would take place in the gymnasium. And by then, I hope we would have something in place for the flooring, since we would have, you know, whether it be students or parents or faculty walking across the floor in dress shoes or heels or whatnot. So I think that, that end of it should already be addressed by the time we have voting there. But I'm not saying we only have to have voting in the Higgins gymnasium. We could have it in the cafeteria, because many districts and many cities have voting in cafeterias. Thank you.
Ms. Dunn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll, I'll tell you what I spoke with Mr. Healy about. Mr. Healy was very concerned about voting in the gymnasium. He was very concerned about many of the activities that will be going on in the gymnasium. And I do think it's best to hear from him. One suggestion that he made was to have many of these actual activities take place in the cafeteria because of the floor. And the issue of graduation, even that came up, where Mr. Healy was recommending that it be held somewhere else. The fact of, that's why I tried to separate out when I said the location of the Higgins is one thing, as opposed to the specific location in the school. It's a big building. There are plenty of areas to be utilized. However, for every, every plan that you bring up, you have another issue that needs to be discussed. For example, when, when, when school is in session and voting takes place, then you need to reschedule. Most schools, it is taking place in the gymnasium. The students will not have gym that day at the high school, at the South, at, you know, traditionally at the Higgins, at the Welch, at the McCarthy, at the Burke, and at the West. If you put it in the cafeteria at the Higgins, you'll have 1,400 students eating their lunch at their desks. The custodians aren't going to want that. I don't think anybody's going to want that. In the new building, we have some new rules about no food in the building. So what I'm, what I'm trying to say is, it really would be good to have you discuss this with Mr. Healy because he really has reasons, pros and cons for everything. And they are based upon, not only his knowledge, but his experience in other facilities. So that's one of the things that you, you need to look at, no matter where the voting takes place. It affects the, it affects the school day. And that is one of the factors that I know the other five members always spoke about, the concern for the actual school day. Most people think, oh, let the kids go out and play in the backyard for gym. It's not as simple as that, especially if we start getting into other areas of the schools. So you do need to have an in-depth conversation. I think we do need to speak with Mr. Healy because, as I said, I, I can, I can tell you everything that he explained to me, but if you come up, come up with more questions, you really should speak with him. There's the cost, there's the storage, there's the staff that would be needed to lay down the rubberized flooring. There were, there are a lot of factors that go into this. It is not as simple as we think.
Mrs. Cauverna.
Thank you. Mrs. Dunn had already pointed out something I was going to say. If we use the cafeteria, what's going to happen? Where are the kids going to eat lunch? I think the misconception is, everyone thinks, what is the big deal? We're closed on election day. We're not. We cannot predict and build in the primary. We could, but it could be a total waste of a day. There could be no primary and we just called no school for it. One year, we had six elections in one school year, and five of them were not planned. It is a disruption to the school day. You're talking about some schools whose only parking spots that we have are strictly reserved for teachers and staff. We don't even let parents drive onto the grounds to drop their kids off because there's just not enough space. So on an election day, staff is directed to park in the back or on the recess area. So we've now used recess area. The kids are not using the gym. There's also the factor of, again, the doors are wide open. Everyone is walking in. I personally witnessed an election day where our security was very, very well-run. It was fabulous. They had cones. Everybody knew where to park. The, the voters were directed into the front door and they knew directly right where they had to go. Because in each side of the hallways was our principal, sitting at a desk all day long, watching the hall. We're using our principals to sit at a desk and block a hallway. I don't think that's a real good use of a principal. Our staff is not there to sit in hallways. We had a school that was under construction one year, and we were using the cafeteria. We were using the gym as classroom space. And then we had an election. We had to petition off the kids in a corner of the cafeteria while we let the other three classrooms in the gym because it was an election day. We've taken over, we've, we've begun laws where we don't allow sex offenders in our parks or our libraries or our school buildings when children are there. They are allowed to come into the school buildings on the day that there is an election. We have, in the world that we live in now, lockdowns.
Point of information.
Excuse me. I have the floor.
Point of information.
I don't think I need it.
If a sex offender is a convicted felon, they do not vote. They lose their right to vote.
Sex offenders vote.
Convicted felons in the United States of America lose their right to vote.
I'm not sure about that. We have lockdown drills now. Not only drills, but we have actual lockdowns and shelter in place. Has the city figured out what they're going to do when we're in the middle of an election, and we shut all the doors and tell all the people that are inside who are voting, you cannot leave. And everyone that's outside, you cannot come in. You want to talk about a recount on that election? Has anyone thought of that? I'm sorry, but this is not a wise decision. It was something that was already voted on. It should have taken place. It should have already been moved. And, and there's no way I will vote on the motion that's at hand.
One of the things that I would like to see is, and we'll see how this vote ends up taking place. One of the things that Mr. Spanos says is, what I would ask is that we meet after the November 8th election jointly with the City Council, school liaison representatives, which I think should be the Board as a whole, and the voter registers, so that we all do get on the same page. One thing that I would like to see, to be perfectly, to be perfectly honest with you, is, to me, we have too many polling locations. Now, that is not up to us. But we spend thousands of dollars each primary, each election, with two polling locations in each ward throughout the city. To me, that's too many. I'll be frank. I think we could easily do that with one in each ward. Save us literally half of what we're paying in elections, when you have our last election that had, I think, an 8% turnout in some wards. So to me, this, is it a school issue? Is it a safety issue? You can put your finger on a number of different issues. To me, this is also a money... To me, this is also a money issue. I, I don't think we need 12 voting locations in this city. I think we could easily do that with six. And I think if we had a joint meeting of the city council and the school committee, to find what those locations would be in each ward, whether it's a school or not, I think would be ideal. So I, by voting on this now, my fear is it just opens up here, do whatever you want without having that discussion. To me, I'd rather hold this so that we have that dialogue, so we have that discussion with the city council, with the, with the board, so that we can get all on the same page. Maybe have one polling location in each ward, whether they're in a school or not. Whatever that best location is, it is. And we can all come to some sort of consensus. So for me, I, I will not be, if I, if it comes to me, I will not be voting in favor of this motion, only so that we have that discussion with everybody at the same time.
Through the chair. So let's just say if this motion did pass, couldn't we revisit this in November? We couldn't bring this up?
By passing this motion as it's written, this basically turns over our schools to the voting board and they can do whatever they want. Right now, right now, we've already voted as a previous board before John and Joe, you got on the board, that they were actually supposed to take voting out of the schools. Then there was some discussion between the city council and the school committee of whether we could do that or not. The attorney came back and stated, we have control of our buildings. So that's where the rubber meets the road, if you will. That's where the discussion lies. To me, and now Mr. Hawkman and Bev, I'll speak for myself. I'm not opposed to voting in schools, but I want to make sure they're the right locations that cert, that, that houses our needs as well as the city's needs. I think if we open it up and just give them a blank check and say, go wherever you want, that restrains us in some respects and may not be the best locations.
Mr. Amico.
Through the chair of the committee, does that, is that in our jurisdiction that we can sit down and, and discuss how many polling places we have in the city? I didn't think that was something that would be.
Nope. It, it is absolutely under their purview of where they are. But I want to be able to at least have that discussion. If they can't use, let's say we say they can't use any of our schools. Now we're at least have a dialogue of where the best polling locations are. Now we're at least having a conversation. The last time, because we've met with, with Tim Healy and the Board of Voter Registers, and we had a great conversation. It was, I want to say, three years ago. And the discussion, he even admitted, meaning Mr. Spanos, that there are too many polling locations. But it's been three years and nothing has changed. So in my opinion, I think this is a good way to have that dialogue continue and to maybe actually see what we can do to lose some of these polling locations, get them in better locations, get them on Main Street, someplace that will attract voters to come and vote. Like I said, whether it's a school, whether it's a church, whether it's, wherever they get to determine, that is absolutely their purview. And as Ms. Dunn had pointed out earlier, then the city council approves their findings, their, their places. So it is absolutely up to them. But I just want to have that discussion and at least have my feelings heard on that.
Mr. Hawkman.
Thank you. And respectfully to the chair, I don't think that your concerns are going to go unheard. I think Mr. Spanos, as Ms. Mega before him, has always taken the concerns of safety in schools seriously.
Absolutely.
That meeting that took place between Mr. Spanos and the Board of Registars took place, if my memory is right, after we took a vote to not permit voting to take place in schools. So they came to us even after we acted and acted in a way that didn't necessarily please them. So I don't have any reason to believe that those conversations after November 8th that Mr. Spanos talks about are going to take place. And I'm not telling the Board of Registars or the city council to use the Higgins. I'm not telling them to use any school. What I'm saying is that the city of Peabody has just paid, Ms. Dunn, $92 million for the Higgins Middle School. Taxpayer funds, whether that came from the MSBA or from real estate taxes or from hotel taxes or whatever, the city used to put that $92 million together. How dare we tell them they can't vote there? How dare we tell them they can't go there for voting in elections? I think that that's extremely arrogant on our part. And I'm not telling them that they should vote there either. I'm saying that the city charter has established a mechanism for the Board of Registars to determine where polling should take place. We shouldn't exclude schools from that opportunity. That's all this motion does. That's all I'm saying. And I think if everyone's ready, we should take a roll call vote.
Mr. Olympio.
So my one lingering question is, let's just pretend that we allow them to vote in the schools. Let's say over the next year or so, there are concerns and there are issues and we don't like the way they're running the election, you know, within the schools. We don't have a right to say a year from now, you're no longer can use our schools? That's.
We do. We can take another vote.
That's what I'm, okay, so let's.
Mrs. Carpenter.
Thank you. Yeah, we can take another vote, just like the vote we took two years ago, three years ago, four years ago that told them they had to move and then it never happened. You know, and when we're talking about taxpayer dollars and how dare we tell them that they can't come in to vote? How dare we tell them that if they do want to come into that building, they're going to run their license through a little machine? There's a lot of rules that happen to taxpayers and there's a lot of other buildings. You know, when this first came about, we did not take a vote and tell them just to get out. We sat down with them and we offered alternatives. We worked with them. We looked at different locations. We didn't just say, get out and find someplace to go. We jointly worked with them. The whole board came up with a slew of ideas of other places to go. And they even got permission from other places that they could go. And then it didn't happen. So the vote that you think you might be able to take later on, if you don't like something, probably won't mean anything. Because the vote that was a five to one twice didn't mean anything. So a lot of work went into it, lists and lists of other places they can go. And we don't tell them where to vote. But if you're going to come up with an idea, you should have some solutions. You know, if you, if you want them to move, you should show that you have other places that they can go. I mean, I personally think that, you know, schools, voting has been in schools forever. Does it make it right? No. Times change. Voter turnout is really low. Other reasons are, why do we even have it in schools when there's not one person in that building that probably can even vote in there? None of the kids can vote in there. You have no idea if the staff even lives in that ward or this city. If they want to start looking at increasing voter turnout, it's time to look at new venues in addition to the other reasons that I've pointed out. And these are some of the conversations that we had with the Board of Registers. It was not only the concerns that I have about it being in the schools, but it was also the concerns of other members about increasing it, making it more accessible, consolidating it, saving taxpayers money by putting it in different locations and not having it spread out around the city. So there are many other reasons why.
And they can still do that?
Mr. Amico.
Through the chair of the committee, and we could probably look at recent voter turnouts. The other reason why, and maybe this is the reason why voter turnout's been a little bit lower. Maybe the elected officials in the city are doing a great job and they are running unopposed. And if someone's running unopposed, maybe that, that doesn't get everyone else to vote. That could be a reason. You know, we, if, if you look at the last few elections, we've had people who've run unopposed because they're doing a great job. There's no opposition because that opposition feels that they can't beat that person who is doing the great job. So maybe that's a reason. But I, I can guarantee you, in, in September and November, we're going to have higher turnouts because it's, it's something that, that has really interested a lot of people. And granted, it's a presidential election versus a, a local election. But let's not look at lower turnout and blame the, you know, the fact that they're in schools and no one wants to go to a school or sex offenders can't go to schools to vote. Maybe it's because the local officials in this city are doing a great job from the top to the bottom where they're running on, people aren't running against them for a reason. Because they can't be beat because they're doing a great job. Let's take a positive spin on the lower turnout. Thank you.
Seeing no further questions, roll call vote.
Could you please read the motion again?
Thank you. Give the city council and the Board of Registars opportunity to use school buildings for four elections if they so choose.
Roll call.
Mr. Hawkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
No.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Motion carries, quote un.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we schedule a meeting with Mr. Spanos for after the November 8th election to discuss any potential expansion of the current utilization of our buildings. So moved.
Second.
You heard the motion by Ms. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hawkman. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Mr. Hawkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
And Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make an additional motion. I would like to request that we make a, a, I'm sorry. I would like to request that we schedule a meeting with Mr. Spanos and the Board of Registars for as soon as possible so that we can review the upcoming elections of September 8th, I believe it's September 8th and November 8th. So moved.
Second.
By Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Hawkman. Roll call vote.
On the motion, I have something I'd like to say. The reason I'd like to have that motion is because I have always, always maintained that even though I was the one vote that wanted to have elections continue in our schools, that we do, everyone on this board had very valid reasons for seeking to have the voting taken out of the schools. And many of those concerns have still not been addressed. I want to make it very clear that we understand that these are taxpayers' buildings. That has never been in question. That was raised in all of the other discussions. Having a new building does not change that in one bit. Every one of these facilities are greatly respected by this board and that the taxpayers are greatly respected by this board, whether the building is 50 years old or two weeks old. We care for these buildings, we take care of them, and we administer them. We have been charged as elected officials with a very specific duty. And this committee has sought to carry that duty out continuously since this issue came up. It has been a difference of opinion between this board and the city council over the administration of our school buildings. And it, at its most important, we have been charged with caring for the safety and education of our children. And every member of this board has reiterated that over and over and over in all of the Those discussions need to continue. Many of the issues that were brought up have not been addressed. Additional police patrols, specific traffic considerations. I, I could go on and on, but we already have the list in our minutes numerous times. And those need to be addressed. They are not frivolous. They were not frivolous when the first vote was taken. They were not frivolous when the second vote was taken. Now, those concerns have not gone away. They have not. So it's going to take a lot of work and I have always believed that that could be done. But it does need to take place now because the safety of our students and the integrity of our educational program needs to be preserved. They need to be respected. They need to be implemented. And going forward, I have no doubt, Mr. Spanos is wonderful to work with. He really is. The Board of Registars are great. They understood it. And they had difficulty finding, finding places that would be suitable based on what they needed. But that meeting needs to take place immediately because at the September primary, our students and staff will be in those buildings and our rules and regulations that govern 178 other days of the year will all be changed. And people need to understand that. The public also needs to understand that. This was not, this was not done with any bad intent. I mean, I'm, I was always on the losing side and I defend my colleagues who fought so hard for this because they went through numerous, numerous meetings, a lot of research, a lot of legwork was done on that. It's all still important. It is all still valid. It all needs to be addressed between now and September. So that's why I made that motion.
On the motion, Mr. Olympio.
Through the chair. Ms. Dunn, I agree with you 1,000%. I threw the, I took up Ms. Carpenter's advice from last meeting. I made several unannounced visits to the various elementary schools and, and there were some concerns. And certainly I would like to think that the city clerk's office and the elected, you know, the election commission will listen to those people that, you know, do have concerns with, you know, with boots on the ground. So that is, you know, I 100% agree with you, Ms. Dunn. And, you know, I went and I saw for myself, I made, like I said, a very numerous unannounced visits to the various schools and talked to a bunch of people.
On the motion.
Mr. Hawkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympio?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Thank you. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda, and that will be public participation. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to come before us and speak? The mic is yours. Seeing no one, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. Dr. Levine.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd first like to thank everybody in the school community especially for their generosity in helping the three Peabody Public School families that were burned out of their home most recently. Some significant money was raised in the form of gift cards to places like CVS and Panafids and Market Basket. They were, the families were overwhelmed with toys and clothes in the first week. The Welch School and other schools did a fabulous job in coordinating these efforts. Modge in my office did a fabulous job in coordinating our efforts. And once again, the Peabody community as a whole and the Peabody school community in particular should be very proud of their efforts. community in particular, should be very proud of their efforts in helping these families through a difficult time. So I just wanted to say a public thank you to everybody. Secondly, I would welcome Dr. Charette to the meeting and ask that he present his personnel report and answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. Before you actually, is just a quick report on, it will show you that there are numerous openings in all the schools. Currently, our principals, directors, and department chairs are very, very busy interviewing candidates and making recommendations. This is a living document, quite frankly, it changes on a daily basis and frequently during the day, it changes on an hourly basis. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I know you're just getting it this evening, so if you wanna, so that digest it and give me a call sometime at a later date, I'm also more than happy to respond to any questions you have in that fashion as well.
Any questions for Dr. Charette? I would just like to add that, I would just like to add that in looking at the first round of signups throughout the district, open enrollments, and not considering requests for school choice, which are significant at this particular time, it looks to me like we're going to need to add at least three and possibly four teachers at the elementary levels. I believe that we'll need to add a kindergarten and a grade four at the center school. I believe that we'll need to add a classroom at the Brown and possibly one at the Carroll. That's the way things are looking right now. So I will give you further updates and probably make some decisions sometime mid to late July regarding those classroom needs, but that's the way it's looking.
Are those classroom, are those classroom needs anything that you did not anticipate?
No. The principals made me quite aware of the class size numbers that they were concerned about, so there's no surprises so far. And continuing on, just some donations that I would ask for your approval. Donation to the Athletics Department in memory of Dave Blanchard of $25 from Donna Roy.
Motion to receive with gratitude and direct the superintendent to write a letter to that effect.
Second.
Second donation and the third donation are connected. We have received some very nice equipment in the cosmetology department. The, we received electric facial chair and four upholstered reception chairs from Rhonda Cummings. I would ask for a vote for that.
Motion to accept the donation with gratitude and direct the superintendent to write a letter to that effect.
Second.
You heard the motion. Any objection? It's a vote.
And lastly, a donation to the cosmetology department of a manicure table, a pedicure cot, and nail dryers from Susan McFaulen.
Now, this is stuff we could use, Dr. Levine. Motion to accept with gratitude and ask the superintendent to write a letter to that effect.
Second.
On the motion, I just have one question. When we accept equipment, do we have somebody that goes through it making sure there's no frayed wires? There's like a utility service that goes through equipment?
Yeah, I think our own people actually do that, but I'll find out for you.
Any objection? It's a vote.
And lastly, as we come to the end of a school year, I'd like to thank the school committee for being supportive, thoughtful, and I guess you were right about the Italy trip, but we had a very productive and excellent school year, and our schools, I believe, are humming, and much of it is due to the professional quality of this school committee. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Levine. Next item on the agenda is written communication. Any questions or comments regarding either one of those written communications? Mrs. Dunn.
Yeah, but I think it's wonderful that Mr. Bedard was recognized by the National Dropout Prevention Network. That is huge. The work that he and his staff perform at the Learning Academy in helping students to stay in school has been so vital to now 100 graduates, but also to the school system in general. We, in years past, had a high dropout rate, and I know that Mr. Sapienza, that Mr. Bedard, and that Mr. Hagstrom, and Mr. Brand also, they all worked very, very hard to lower that rate. And it was, it was hard work, but they have done amazing things for the students in helping them to obtain a high school diploma, which is just so vital to everyone. And it's nice to see that Seeth was recognized. So I hope that goes into his file, and hopefully he got a certificate or something to hang on the wall, because that's quite an accomplishment.
Through the chair. Just to add quickly to that, so that the community knows, the investment that this school committee made, because I was here in 2011 when you made the commitment to the PANS program, the night school, and I know and followed your commitment to Seeth Bedard's program at the Learning Academy. Together, there are 45 students a year that populate those two programs. Times an average of $15,000 a year that we're reimbursed from the state because of our population in Chapter 70 funds is a significant, over a half a million dollars a year amount of money that comes back to us if all 45 of these kids were not with us, had they dropped out of school, for example. So it's, it's not just the right thing to do because of the kids that we serve, but it's also visionary on the part of the school committee in recapturing funds that otherwise would go unsent to the City of Peabody.
Well said. Ms. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It regards the letter from Susan Slatter on Take Pride and Burke. She's doing a great job. She really is. It's, it's good to see that she sent in that letter, and I'm glad to see that they're gonna do it again. That's, that's a lot of school spirit up there, and it's very nice.
Moving on to the next item on the agenda, Subcommittee Reports. Education Subcommittee, Mr. Hawkman.
Nothing to report at this time.
Finance Subcommittee, Mrs. Carpenter.
Thank you. As previously reported, we had reached an agreement with Unit B and C, and tonight I would like to ask to take a formal vote to ratify those contracts. I do have paper copies here, but I did send them electronically. Does anybody need a paper copy? No? Okay. And for the public, I also have them as well. So I would like to make a motion, the first one will be to ratify the MOA for Unit B, the Peabody School Administrators Association, for the three-year contract that will run through August 31st of 2018.
Second.
Second.
You heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. On the motion, Mr. Hawkman.
Thank you, Mr. Rosnold. I just want to thank Ms. Carpenter, Mr. Olympia, Dr. Levine, Ms. Mertag, Dr., Mr. Kenniston, and then Mr. Jack, and everyone else that helped with this negotiation. It was actually an extremely productive negotiation, in my opinion, on behalf of both parties. I also want to thank Unit B, as we call them, for their courtesy and cooperation and collegiality in terms of negotiating this and sitting at the table with us and working with us into getting this contract to this point. And I'm happy to see that Unit B has ratified this contract already. I will say that although Dr. Levine put in painstaking hours and really led the charge on most of the modifications that took place in this bargaining agreement, I wish it went a little bit further. I always wish it goes a little bit further, but you took us to as far as I think we could get on this. I think it's a good contract for, for the school department. I think it's a good contract for Unit B, and I'd ask that the board approve it.
No further discussion on the motion. Roll call vote.
Mr. Hawkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Well done.
I would also like to ratify the Unit C. As previously reported at another meeting, that we reached an agreement with Unit C, so I would like to take a formal vote to ratify the agreement between Unit C, which is the paraprofessionals, for a three-year contract memorandum of agreement that will run through August 31st of 2018.
Second.
You heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter, seconded by Mr. Olympia. Discussion on the motion being none. Roll call vote.
Mr. Hawkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you. I would actually like to thank the members of the Finance Subcommittee on Negotiations for their hard work. You know, it takes a long time to get these things through, and not being on the Subcommittee, I do hear from, from other folks who have said that they were very, very pleased with the tone of the meetings, that there were some tough negotiations in there, but the process was very respectful. And Mrs. Carpenter, you led a good group, and you did a fine job on this, and thank you for bringing these in in such a timely fashion, because now our, all of our staff will be able to start the new school year with their contracts, and it was a great accomplishment. So be very proud, and thank you.
Next item on the agenda is school safety. Mrs. Carpenter.
Thank you. The School Safety Subcommittee met this evening, and we were in executive session, and we did have the chief join us, and we have a couple of recommendations that are coming out. The School Safety Subcommittee has recommended to move forward with another year with COPSYNC. And we also will have the superintendent bring forward some new language on the procedure for parent notification of lockdown and shelter in place, which will be reviewed when he's finished writing that. And I think that's it for now. Thank you.
Nothing to report under Athletic and Wellness Quality and Standards. Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Nothing to report at this time, but we will be scheduling meetings during the summer. We're still working on the project of updating the, the policies that have come out from MAS-C, and also reviewing the policy manual itself to make sure that we're in conformity and compliance with all updated matters.
Thank you. Liaison to the City Council and Advisory Boards. Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you again. First, I'll report on the Parent Advisory Board meeting. The last meeting of the school year was held last Monday. It was 7:00 at the Higgins. There were several parents there in attendance. I do have the attendance record with me. The topics that were discussed were just updates on several issues that parents had asked for in the past and plans for the next school year. We're hoping to start off the year with a visit, if you'll come again, Dr. Levine, if you'll attend, just to update parents on, you know, what the school year, what the, what the goal for next year is. The parents would also like to hear from school nurses, and I had already spoken with Sharon Cameron and Brenda Wolf. They're going to come in, in the, in the fall and give a nice presentation on exactly, you know, what they do for the students in all of our schools. They also, the parents also requested an update regarding the cafeteria and food services. So we're scheduling those this year, oh, I'm sorry, over the summer, so that we're prepared in fall. One of the things that the parents were greatly appreciative of was the fact that they have all been now added to our distribution list for any of the notifications that go out for meetings. And that, that took two seconds, thanks to Maj Makarali, and she put them all on the list, and it's one more, one more step forward. The greatest issue that comes through at all of the meetings is about communication, communication in the district and keeping people informed of what's going on. So we're making some progress, and we're gonna let them have two months to, to regroup, and then we'll start up again in September. There were a couple of changes that will come forward in the fall. PTOs have their meetings and elect their parent advisory board meeting, parent advisory board member, usually in the spring. Some do wait till the fall, but most of them are in the spring. So we know we'll have a couple of new members and some, many returning members, and they're doing a fine job.
Thank you. You'll have to report to them the new app that we have.
Definitely. This is, this is really, really amazing. The second thing that I'd like to bring forward is I have sent out another request to City Clerk Tim Spanos, as well as Dave Gravell and Ann Manning. They are the members of the Liaison Subcommittee along with Mr. Olympia and Mr. Amico. And we're just trying to find a date to, to meet. I expanded the agenda. Originally, the original agenda for this meeting, which has taken so long to schedule, was about the issue of voting in the schools, and it was specific about the Ward Four considerations. In light of tonight's vote, that topic may be, it may actually be moot, although I would like to correct the record between the two boards as to what that discrepancy was. Also, when I expanded that agenda, I suggested that we just meet so that we can bring them up to date on much of the progress that we have made in our school district, and let them know, you know, how, how vital many of these programs are, what the needs of the district are, and how appreciative we are of the financial support that the council approves. So that meeting has not been scheduled, but it should be at some point in July. At the latest, it would be early August, and it will probably be a, a standard meeting where the actual goal of this Subcommittee was to be a liaison. And I think it's a good time to update them on things that, you know, that were brought up during the budget discussion, but we could go into much further depth. So, Dr. Levine will probably be asking you to attend that one as well. Thank you.
Building in grounds without the mayor being here. We'll hold that for next time. New business, Veterans Remembrance. Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The reason this is on tonight is because I have made a request, and what I am going to do is I will be making a motion to refer this to the Quality and Standards Subcommittee. I am asking for a remembrance of a member of the class of 1976 at PB, PB Veterans Memorial High School, Colonel James Moore. Colonel Moore, a graduate of Norwich University, a graduate, again, of PB Veterans Memorial High School, and a graduate of the Naval War College, was killed in action in 2004. Jim Moore was a classmate of mine. He was a wonderful student at PB High School, and presently, there is no memorial for him at the high school. The proper process is to bring something like this forward and then to refer to Quality and Standards where the actual remembrance is vetted. And then at that point, the Subcommittee should come out with a recommendation for the full school committee. In order to do the proper job on that, meetings need to take place with the administration at the high school. Because it is at the high school, someone from the Veterans Council should also be included in that discussion. And I can tell you that there are classmates of Colonel Moore from Norwich University who wish to financially assist with this memorial. At the high school, areas can only be named for a veteran. That's why this is truly appropriate. And I know that it would be appreciated by his family, his classmates, and a lot of his, his friends all over the world. And presently, our process allows for, for us to go through these steps. So I would like to make a motion that this matter be referred to the Quality and Standards Committee for future report. So moved.
Second.
You heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico. Any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Mr. Hawkman?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is MAS-C nomination. Mrs. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to place before you a motion requesting that the name of David McGinnity be submitted to the Massachusetts Association of School Committees for life membership. This nomination would follow along with Mr. McGinnity for his continued advocacy for public education. Dave didn't run for school committee, and he doesn't sit with us every Tuesday. Dave didn't run for school committee, and he doesn't sit with us every Tuesday. He does listen to me complain all the time about different issues, but that, that goes without saying. But Dave has continued to advocate for public schools. He is still fighting the Common Core. He is dogging Commissioner Chester, as he should. This is a public process. It's public education, and Dave demands the answers. And he presently has received the lifetime achievement award from MAS-C, but this award, and thank you, Marge, for printing this out for me, this award is made to honor individuals who threw their service to the association or to education. They have made a significant contribution. Dave advocates continuously, and I don't think he's ever going to stop fighting for education, whether he's an elected official or not. So I would like to, with your permission, I would like to submit his name for life membership at MAS-C. So moved.
I'd like to step down as the chairman for a moment and second that motion. Discussion on the motion. I'd just like to say, on the motion, doing this for 20 years is impressive. Doing it as well as he did for 20 years is even more impressive. And going back to an original, earlier topic regarding Seeth and the job that he's doing at the alternative high school, Dave put it perfectly. If we save one kid, we did our job. Not only did we save one kid, but now half of those, if not all of them, are attending college. These are the kids that wouldn't have graduated, so it's his foresight, and it's his compassion, and it's his drive for education that is pretty impressive. On the motion.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Mr. Hockman? Mr. Rosnol?
Yes.
Mrs. Carpenter?
Yes.
Mrs. Dunn?
Yes.
Mr. Olympia?
Yes.
Mr. Amico?
Yes.
Thank you. And I invite all of you, if you'd like to send in comments, I will include them in the nomination.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Mrs. Dunn. Last item on the agenda for new business is July, I'm assuming that's supposed to be August, oh, Jul-, oh, sorry, July 16 through 17, school committee schedule.
Motion to approve.
Yeah. Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. I did have some conversations earlier today with Dr. Levine regarding the calendar, and I just want to point out a couple of dates that I would respectfully ask get moved from the version of the calendar that we have now. Let me just double check. April 11, 2017 is the first evening of a religious holiday for me, it's Passover, so I'm asking if that date could be moved. If it was moved to the Monday, the 10th, that would be fine. Wednesday, the 12th would not be, if that is something that the board is considering. And also, and I'm trying to get the, also, the holiest day of the year in my religion is Yom Kippur, and it's a day that we have offering schools, collectively bargained to have offering schools, and I'm just trying to find the date this year. I know it conflicts with one of these. I believe it's September 27th, so I would ask that, again, that not take place, that meeting not take, take place on the 27th or the 28th, as that would be the evening in which I would come off a day-long fast and a day-long of prayer. So I would ask if those two dates could be moved, and in addition to that, if we could reduce the number of meetings over the summer. My conversation with Dr. Levine was about whether or not it would be beneficial for this body to meet in the July dates, and I can ask you here what your opinion is of that, Dr. Levine.
Through the chair. I know that different people have different views on this. As far as business is concerned, I think it, if we met the, once in July, at the end of July, and once in August before school starts, that would be productive. The end-of-July meeting, I would have all of the information to you about class sizes and the need for more teachers at the elementary levels, and the meeting in August, I would be able to report to you about all of the activities that would be taking place for the beginning of school. So July is kind of a month where a lot of administrators take their vacation time because when we reach August first, we start to ramp up for the beginning of the school year. So I think that a meeting at the end of July and a meeting before school starts in August, which I think we have planned for the 23rd, would be appropriate.
On that, I think you're right on target. I think one meeting in July will solidify our hiring and see where we are with that, which would move us forward to August.
Mr. Chairman?
Ms. Hockman?
If I can. The date for Yom Kippur is actually the October 11th meeting, if I can just get that, make sure that we're clear on that.
So looking at the calendar issue moving forward, would everybody be amendable for one meeting in July and one meeting in August? Let's start with that first. Mrs. Dunn.
Actually, Mr. Amico was first.
Sorry.
I could see it.
I would, I just wanted to get the date, if we could, on that date, please.
It'd be the 26th?
Yes. Okay, thank you.
Mrs. Dunn.
Yes, under our policy, that is what we are allowed to do, to have one meeting in July and one in August if we so choose, so we're okay.
As far as amending the rest of the calendar, I don't see any issue with changing dates in April and October, so.
I do think that there is a problem with the October 11th date, though, because we have the 10th off and we have the 12th off, and we, we should look into how, you know, scheduling, we have to have two meetings minimum in October, so we do need to locate an alternate date for that meeting.
We can find a date. We have plenty of time. So, but, okay. Anything further, Mr. Hockman?
No, thank you, and thank you for the consideration of my colleagues.
Items for our next agenda will be handled in the regular course of business. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.